Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 2nd Waukegan City Council meeting. Whether you're watching this meeting online, from home, or here at the City Hall, I want everyone to know how honored I am to serve as your mayor. In an effort to ensure transparency in our government here in the city of Waukegan, the agenda for our meetings is posted online at least two days before the meeting. And we have the bi-weekly City Council meetings. You can go to the city website, waukegonil.gov, for meeting agendas and other important information on your city government. As you may have noticed, we are again wearing face masks in City Hall. Under the guidance of the Lake County and Illinois Departments of Public Health, we made this change at the end of last week. I know that for many people, this is disheartening. But I will do everything I can, as your mayor, to protect every person and every soul in this city. I also want to make the sincere promise to you that if the guidelines from our public health officials changes and masks won't be required, the city again will stop wearing them. I do want to take this opportunity to encourage everyone who has not been vaccinated to please, please do so. For the sake of your neighbors, for your friends, please get this vaccination. I'd also like to address tonight that we are now voting on our fiscal year 2022 salary ordinance presented to the City Council for approval. With Juneteenth finally and rightfully becoming a state and federal holiday, I want you to know I will continue reviewing the process for incorporating the holiday into our salary ordinance moving forward. That being said, right now, we are approving our current fiscal year. That will be discussed as we move into the next budget year, so that everyone is clear on the council and in the audience and residents that that's how we'll handle that going forward. I understand that we're living in challenging times for families and businesses, and at times it's easy to become frustrated or impatient. Still, as I've said, as an alderman for six years and now as your mayor for a few months, we must treat everyone in our community with dignity and respect. When it comes to my job as mayor today, I have a singular ask of our residents, business owners, staff, and fellow elected officials to please respect the process that makes us good government. This means that we all must comply with the city ordinances and processes. While I certainly agree that the wheels of government often move too slowly, no one in the city under my administration is going to get special treatment. Instead, everyone will be treated well and equally under the law, and together in these next three and a half years, I am confident we will be well on our way towards tremendous economic development, new opportunities, and living up to our city motto, "The City of Progress." I have a few quick announcements. Well, maybe they're not so quick, but I'll go through them. City water bills are due this Friday. The city's water bill payment system has been updated to better serve our residents and our businesses. Effective immediately, the pay-by-phone telephone number has been changed to 866-414-8539. And payments may also still be made in person or online. The Waukegan Park District is hosting a Beverly Park renovation public meeting this Wednesday, August 4th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the park. The public's invited to share their ideas and suggestions for improving the park. The Genesee Theater has a full schedule of shows this week with Britt Floyd. The scheduled ticket information and policies concerning masks can be found at geneseetheater.com. Our award-winning and nationally-ranked Waukegan High School JROTC Drill Team invites everyone to join them at Chipotle on Waukegan Road on Saturday, August 14th, from 5:00 to 9:00 to raise money for traveling to competitions. The drill team consistently makes us proud, and this is your chance to support them. We will be having our first community forum this Saturday, August 7th, at 10:30 in the morning, and it's on police use of force. There's flyers in the back for anybody interested. They're in English and in Spanish for you to see. Some other events coming up on August 28th. Lake County Black Business Expo will be from 1:00 to 5:00 on Madison Street. This, or Saturday, August 14th, from 11:00 to 3:00. Westside Community Center has some, there's Summer Block Party where they're giving backpacks away. Fly the Ford Tour on Flight Experience is this week, the 5th through the 8th, if you haven't seen the brochures on that. The Carnegie Library Restoration and Programming Benefit will be at the Glen Flora Country Club on Saturday, August 21st, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, September 11th, is the airshow. And if you haven't gotten your tickets, they're $15. You can go ahead and reserve now. And don't forget that the water park is still open, and it'll be open even when school starts, so go ahead and enjoy that. The, this August 7th is Girls of Character Community Event from 10:00 to 12:00 at Bowen Park. This Saturday is also the renaming of the Thomas Jefferson School at 1:00, and that's at 600 South Lewis. On Sunday, August 8th, Three Brothers Royalty Fundraiser is from 2:00 to 5:00. And on August 13th, the 7th Annual Staben and Eddie Washington Golf Outing is at Foss The Lake County Black Expo, I just advertised to you, so I think that's all of them. At this time...
We need to do the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
See what happens when I have so much information to pass on to you guys? I'd also be, at this time, like to talk about resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments.
What about the invocation?
Invocation?
I'm sorry, what, I'm sorry, we missed the invocation, too. I'm sorry. We're just rolling right along tonight, and you can tell I'm like, ahead of myself. Is Dr. Patricia Hyman here? You're hiding from me, where are you?
There she is.
There she is.
Good evening, ma'am.
Will you, before you give your prayer, will you also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Afterwards?
You would probably have to do that for me.
After your invocation, it is actually.
All right. First of all, I would like to say thank you and good evening to each and every one of you. As we come before you this evening in prayer, I will come just lifting up the Word of the Lord found in Romans 13:1-5, 1 Peter 5:6, and Colossians 3:14. Father God, even as we come before you, lifting up your Word, Father, we come clothed in your love this evening, trusting that your Spirit will bind us together in harmony and in peace. We pray, Father God, your blessings upon our mayor, upon this administration. We pray, Father God, for our community. We pray for our aldermen, our neighbors, and our neighborhoods. We thank you, Father, and we lift up this great city of Waukegan. We trust that your wisdom will be the guiding force that releases the manifestation of your goodness and your power as we continue to build this city and to seek solutions. Now, Father, we thank you for hearing our prayers, and we humble ourselves this evening under your almighty hand. We thank you, God, and we lovingly submit to work together in faith and unity and love with one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I think I was just too excited now that the township supervisor is here, that we were trying to honor her too quickly. So we're going to go on to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. So first up is a motion to approve Resolution 21R51 honoring Waukegan Township Supervisor Patricia Jones. Retirement.
Second.
Third.
I want to make it first.
Alderman Newsome and Alderman Kirkwood. All those in favor. I, I don't even know how to describe the words for you. You've been such an inspiration for all of us sitting up here. You've been a true leader, and as we said when we saw you, we, we gave you your proclamation, but we are just so humbled by all the things that you've done, and we hope that our legacy is a part of your legacy to us. So, thank you. Thank you. We'd like you to speak, and we'd also like many pictures.
I was writing my brief comments, tears were beginning to flow, so bear with me. I don't know if that's a sign of turning 70 or what. But bear with me, please. So I'm also a person, you know, of visuals, so I just wanted to bring a couple of visuals just to, you know, state my point and my purpose. So at my retirement celebration and birthday celebration, I received many gifts and proclamations, and I appreciate all of them. This one is very, very interesting, and I think somewhat funny, because it's a coaster, as you see, and I use it for my coffee and whatnot, and it says retirement. The noun is, "I do what I want, when I want, and what I want." But it's also, it says, "It's not my problem anymore." And you have the right to say that. So I love this. It's not my problem anymore, Supervisor Jones. And I also have the resolution.
Wow, it's beautiful.
It is beautiful. Alderman Turner, the city of Waukegan, and as Mayor Taylor just said, you know, the city of progress. So I love the city of Waukegan. And with that being said, I'll say my remarks and then be seated. To Mayor Ann Taylor the first, Alderman Dr. Pastor Bolton, which I've known for about 50 years, Alderman Patrick, see, I know she doesn't look it, but really, we have. Alderman Patrick Seager. Alderman Seager and I and Ray Bukovich will remember this. When he first ran for office, first ran for Alderman, and I ran for Alderman, the fifth ward, Alderman Newsome, Alderman Seager and I would meet mostly at my home and whatnot, and this is a true story. He walked the soles of his shoes off. That's how hard he worked. You may not see it now, but back then, he knocked on every door, rain, sleet, hail or snow, and we worked together. Alderman Gregory Moseo, to you and your family members and all that you're doing in the school system, and the same Alderman, Dr. Odell Kirkwood, who has serviced our students and our community. Alderman Edith Newsome, who has been consistent since being an Alderman, and she has been a president of the Staben House. Alderman Keith Turner, of whom we worked together long time with the Democratic Party, and thank you, sir, for returning my calls. I know some of you looked, he worked in the Democratic Party, but yes, he did. Once he was the secretary, and a good one at that. Alderman Felix Rivera. Alderman Dr. Lynn Florian, my sister, who comes with so much zest and vigor. And Alderman Thomas Hayes, I'm looking forward to working with you, sir. And to City Clerk Janet Kill Kelly, who was once a Waukegan Township trustee and a good friend. So Janice, we'll have to do lunch, right? And then to Treasurer Dr. John Schwab, is he here today? Dr. Schwab always takes ti, oh, there you are, my brother.
I'm kind of a short guy back there. Okay, I was, but if we have lunch, I'll buy.
Well, that's the only way we're gonna have lunch, but, come on now. But to Treasurer Schwab, who always checks in on my mother with a phone call or sending her a card. So to everyone, Mayor Taylor, something you did not know, my middle name is Ann. And Ann is the middle name of my youngest granddaughter. Who still serves as Little Miss Waukegan. My cup runneth over with joy and appreciation to each of you for the recognition and kind words embedded within Resolution 21-R51 that was presented to me during my 70th birthday celebration by the Honorable Mayor Ann Taylor. As the Waukegan Township Supervisor for close to 30 years, I had the opportunity to work with Mayor Durkin, Mayor Drew, Mayor Hyde, Mayor Sabanjan, Mayor Motley, and Mayor Cunningham. And isn't it befitting that it's the female mayor that can give me the resolution for my service?
Yes, it is fitting.
So back in the day, through all of the mayors, it was a challenge, but in a good way. The few times I appeared before the City Council, we didn't have a Bolton, Newsome, or Florian. So I applaud the city of Waukegan for recognizing the value of the need to celebrate and appreciate diversity, because it was something else standing before all of them. It was under the Durkin administration, however, that the Eddie Washington Center received support, and support from the entire City Council. The deceased but honorable Lucius Copeland was the Alderman at that time. When we received a federal grant in support of the Staben House, it was Larry Dixon, many of you may remember Larry Dixon, who championed the intergovernmental relationship between the city of Waukegan and the county of Lake and Waukegan Township. Additionally, you have over 15 to 20 years, you have supported our Home Sweet Home program, enabling hundreds of senior citizens to receive assistance with snow removal and lawn maintenance. There has been a longtime relationship between Waukegan Township and the city of Waukegan. So our accomplishments as a township government has received state and national attention. Thusly, it has been a supreme honor to serve as your Waukegan Township Supervisor. The accomplishments mentioned were supported by a phenomenal Board of Trustees, led by longtime trustee Catherine Rothwell Francis, and support of a superb staff. Today's Board of Trustees include Senior Trustee Percy Johnson, Trustee Sylvester Castellanas, Trustee Jeff McBride, and Trustee Dulce Ortiz. Rose Staben, the widow of Supervisor, former Supervisor Mil Staben is the longtime clerk, and Mark Strickland is the assessor. I love each of them and each of you so much. So as I close, Mayor Taylor, I want to reiterate the love that I have for my city. And with this love, Mayor Taylor, comes an observation that involves each and every one of us in these chambers and those listening and looking online at me. And that is, we must strive to work together to continue to beautify our city. During my retirement time, I don't drive as quickly, so as I slowly drive around the city, I see weeds growing in empty lots, grass growing in areas where the landlord is probably living outside of the community, and I find this unacceptable. Empty lots have become storage places for cars, trucks, et cetera, in residential areas. And I love my city. It is disturbing to hear screeching tires and the revering of engines while trying to sleep, but I love my city. And so when the police come to assist, and there are times when they come and they don't get a lot of support, we must, with the old adage, "If you see something, say something." I love my city. I have had to utilize the services of the Waukegan Fire Department upon occasion when it came to my mother. I have, upon occasion, used Vista Hospital, everyone, for my father, my mother, and myself. It's a great hospital, Vista is. So I leave by saying, let's come together, protect our community, support our leaders, because after all, we are our brothers' keeper. Thank you, and I love my city.
Patricia, I distinctly remember when you and I first met, when you came to speak to Mayor Durkin over in Old City. You spoke at audience time, and then I introduced myself after. That was 21 years ago.
Oh, my gosh.
I remember.
Oh, my gosh. So this is my family.
Mark, get everybody next to Mark.
Oh, I can't be behind Mark.
All right, and Clyde looks like he's taking a picture, so if you want to look out there first. And then if you look right here, I'd appreciate it. One more, thank you.
Thank you all. This is my brother and my sister-in-law. This is Little Miss Waukegan. Jax is the youngest, you know, Mark, my daughter-in-law, Jasmine, my oldest granddaughter, a senior at Connaught, who was just selected to be on the, what is it, volleyball team? It's a big thing. Junior Libits, and London, who is in middle school and doing great things, and Project Discovery. Is that right? Okay, so thank you all.
Thank you so much that, honestly, for everything you've done for our community, and we just want to say how much we appreciate you. Next, I need a first for a motion, and that would be Alderman Rivera, a second.
Second.
Alderman Hayes. A motion to adopt a resolution supporting the Connect Waukegan Broadband Initiative and the efforts of the Waukegan Community Broadband Task Force, known as the WCBT. Roll call, please, or any questions to the motion first. Roll call, please.
What is that initiative? Maybe you could explain what that initiative is for our audience.
Okay. Actually, I will let Alderman Kirkwood explain it, because that's his committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The broadband initiative is to bring internet and fiber to all the residents of Waukegan. And so the committee has met for some time now that we are looking at bringing dollars into the city of Waukegan, as well as from the federal government. If you were listening to the news tonight, part of the infrastructure program will be millions of dollars that will be given to the cities to do broadband. And so certainly, we have great partners that we're working with to bring that to all the citizens of Waukegan, looking at not only existing, but those houses that are being built so that it's easy to access the internet and other forms of broadband, so that we can communicate better with our residents. Thank you.
Did that answer your question, Alderman Turner?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Alderman Kirkwood.
Roll call, please, roll call.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Audience time.
Thank you. Audience time, you have three minutes. We have a number and a people. The first one would be Demetrius Salvadis.
Good evening. Sorry, good evening. Just a couple of items that are of concern to me, and I think others as well, but there was recently an event held called the Unofficial Scoop. That was extremely disruptive. It was attended, I have no idea how many it was, well over 1,000 people congested into the area, running from Washington Street to Water Street, where most of it was. It was beyond loud. It was just unbelievable. I called the non-emergency police number several times. They finally sent someone out. There was no police presence there at all. The crowd was so large, I was just shocked that there was no incident. If there was, it could have been an absolute disaster. Thank God there wasn't. So the squad came out once, made a pass through Genesee Street and Washington South and Genesee to Water, then Westa Block, and then north past the Courthouse Complex, and then back on Washington Street, lights flashing the entire time, and then left, and that was it for the evening. Not stopped any traffic, did not check any vehicles, did not have any words with anybody, just drove through, literally drove through. When I called the last time and spoke with the non-emergency party on the phone, I asked, "Is this something that there is a permit on? And if so, when does it expire? Or even better, whose name is it in?" Could not give me the name, but I was told that there was a permit, it expired at 11:00. They didn't break up till after 12:30. Once again, no police presence at all. If you have the opportunity, walk south on Genesee Street from Washington to Water, you'll see the after-effects of it. There is tire burned rubber everywhere. They were doing 360 donuts in the street. They were crouching like crazy, up and down, yelling, screaming, and it was just like, who's gonna be allowed as the next person? Anyway, long story short, that's not a good mark for Waukegan. I'm surprised that that burned rubber is still in front of Ray's grocery store to the extent that it is. There's been no attempt to clean it up in any fashion. And if you're looking to attract new business to the downtown, I know you're new, but low-hanging fruit. It suggests cleanup, nothing else. It suggests cleanup, nothing else. The second thing which affects me and everybody else that owns property in Waukegan are the new assessments that came out, which, to say they're entertaining is an understatement. So I own properties in the downtown district.
Thank you, Mr. Dimitri.
That's it.
Three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Machowski.
My name's Matt Machowski. I've lived in Waukegan for 10 years with my wife and dog. I'm an elected precinct committee person and a union organizer with my union that represents federal employees. Like everyone, I'm concerned about gun violence in Waukegan. I live near Bowen Park. I've called the police over gunshots in my neighborhood that I've heard while walking my dog. My phone has actually cracked when I tripped while running from gunshots that I heard while walking my dog. So I want to make sure that Waukegan is being smart, though, about how we approach gun violence and really use our resources effectively, which is why I'm really concerned about hearing that the city is considering this ShotSpotter technology. It's really expensive, and it's not a guarantee of a safer Waukegan. It means privatizing dispatch decisions to a for-profit company with pseudoscience and a questionable record. There've been some studies that showed 86% of the police dispatches in Chicago that were based on ShotSpotter data turned out not to be a crime at all. And we saw in one of those cases with Adam Toledo's shooting, it can escalate situations that don't need to be escalated. What's really troubling, too, Vice has reported that ShotSpotter has falsified and altered evidence to justify police actions after the fact. And all these studies show that ShotSpotter does not reduce the number of shootings in the cities that it's at, in St. Louis, in Philadelphia, and lots of other cities. And I've been speaking with some experts on this technology and on policing. Freddie Martinez, the executive director of the Lucy Parsons Labs, Jack Bandi, a PhD candidate on technology and ethics at Northwestern. We're trying to figure out a way that we can bring them to present in Waukegan, they're the real experts on why ShotSpotter's claims don't, you know, match reality. And, you know, I would just encourage the council that if you want to spend money to reduce gun violence, we should take the money that you would give to this company and invest it in jobs here in Waukegan, invest it in violence intervention programs like ceasefire. And I think, you know, anyone looking for a quick solution to gun violence, you know, this is, you know, a problem that's societal.
Thank you, Mr. Machowski.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Calvin Mathis.
Ms. Kelly, I don't have my timer, so if you could just give me 30-second notice so I can wrap it up. I don't have my timer with me, so, and I noticed the clock isn't working, and I like to wrap up and make sense of what I'm saying the best I can in three minutes. But I was going to talk about us versus them, that's what I said the last time, but I appreciate what Ms. Jones said about community and supporting your leaders, and I hope you guys know that's what I want to do. But sometimes tough things have to be said, but, you know, I'm not going to say them tonight, because I like what the gentleman said about the ShotSpotter and all that, and I spoke on that the last time. I would add to that, let's consider streetlights. But the main thing, I guess I'll say tonight, is that I've talked to a number of you guys over the years. Alderman Bolden, I talked to her last week, that was a great conversation. Thank you, Alderman Bolden. And Mo, I always speak to him. Alderman Kirkwood, I really appreciate your work last year with the stretch situation. Alderman Newsome, I've talked to you over the years, got to know you. Alderman Florian, it's just great to get to know you. New Alderman here, I'm going to get to know him in the future, and Alderman Turner. I say that just to say that I'm not here to make any enemies. That's not what I do. I want us to work together. I want us to do the best we can be, to be the best that we can be as a city, as Ms. Jones said. This is a city we all live in, it's a community, we all love our community, we want to see our community do the right thing and be a great community. But we got issues, to me, in my opinion. We can do much better. And so that's going to be my spiel for tonight, and that's my thing. I'm here to make friends, not enemies, but if a few enemies come up on the long way, one be the first. But that's not what I do. So I'm here, I want to work with everybody, get everybody to work together, and I'm glad Brother Blanks is here. We've been working some things out with him, and he's a great community guy. I firsthand just see the work he does, and I just appreciate it. Brother has the keys. That's the brother we should be really, that I know of, because I just worked with him personally, and he's given some great love, and I appreciate your brother and appreciate working with you. So the next time it's going to be us versus them, we'll go from there.
You still have 13 seconds. Mr. William Coleman.
I allocate my minutes to Ray Edwards.
Speak up.
I allocate my minutes to Ray Edwards.
Good evening, everybody. How everybody doing?
Good.
First off, I didn't know you was here tonight, Ms. Jones. Congratulations again, you are absolutely remarkable, ma'am, seriously. But I come here tonight, and my heart is heavy again. Before I even talk about my heart, I want to say thank you to Ms. Edith Newsome for everything that you did over the weekend, the bookbag giveaway, your contribution. I appreciate you showing up and showing your face. To Ms. Dr. Lynn Florina, you fabulous, I'm just speechless, everything, you helped with everything. But tonight, I come here because I have to talk to my mayor. I'm disturbed, very disturbed. We campaigned there, I did. I knocked over 2,000 doors because I want to change in a city that I love. But what I'm seeing today is the same behavior of the past administration. I need you guys to understand, everything that happens behind closed doors always surface outside. So when we come in here and we came into this administration, we came in to sow a seed, to do something different. We're not doing nothing different. We're still double-dipping. We still being lightweight bullies. We taking staff from places without consulting. It's ridiculous. I spoke with you over a weekend, and I said to you, I said, Ms. Anne, what I need from you guys is not to spend $92,000 on ShotSpotter. I need you to put them $92,000 into my babies. And you said to me, you said, well, unfortunately, the city don't fund social programs for children. That's disturbing. That's what I asked for. That's why I campaigned, and I'm disgusted, and I have to say that. And before I go further, I want to say to this good Alderman, Mr. Turner, I spoke with you about ShotSpotter, and you said something that is unbecoming of an Alderman. But I want to say to you, because I want this on a record, my babies ain't no animals. And when people live in poverty, ain't nothing wrong with them receiving government assistance. And maybe you should start voting Republican and take that D up off your name, because you don't represent the Democratic Party too well, sir. And so as I close when I'm saying this, I came here to return something today, because my heart is heavy. I had a bookbag giveaway. Thank you to supervisor Mark Jones for his remarkable job of securing a place for us, making a way for us to get it done with just a snap of a finger. We just asked, and he made it happen. He didn't tell me what he couldn't do.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
He didn't tell me what he couldn't do. But I'm going to say, thank you for the donation, but my kids are worth more than any races, ma'am. And I'm donating the bag back to you guys.
Priscilla Resendez.
My name is Priscilla Resendez. I was disturbed to hear that our city is considering a contract with ShotSpotter, an acoustic gunshot detection system. Our community needs resources, not surveillance. I urge the city council to consider that communities are already organizing against this technology in Chicago, where its detection and subsequent deployment of officers was responsible for the death of Adam Toledo. Consider that claims of its accuracy and effectiveness come from its marketing and sales department and not its engineers, and no independent assessment of this technology has ever been done. A study by the MacArthur Justice Center from Northwestern School of Law found that from July 1, 2019, to April 14, 2021, using City of Chicago's data, 89% of ShotSpotter deployments turned up no gun-related crime, and 86% led to no report of any crime at all. In less than two years, there were more than 40,000 dead-end ShotSpotter deployments. From Jonathan Maines, an attorney from the aforementioned center, the ShotSpotter system in Chicago prompts thousands of deployments by police hunting for gunfire in vain. This system puts police on high alert and sends them racing into communities, but almost nine times out of 10, the police don't turn up evidence of gun crime or any crime at all. It creates a powder keg situation for residents who just happen to be in the vicinity of a false alert. Don't let our community suffer this collateral damage. Consider the threat to every person's fundamental right to privacy. In at least two criminal trials, prosecutors introduced audio recordings of people's voices from these acoustic gunshot detection systems. In the case People versus Johnson in California, the court admitted the evidence. In Commonwealth versus Dennison in Massachusetts, the court ruled that this recording was prohibited interception under the Massachusetts Wiretap Act. I do not want to live in a Waukegan that is over-surveilled and over-policed, one where ShotSpotter alert will dispatch the slayer of our Adam Toledo. These several thousands of dollars could be better invested back into our community, investments that are proactive instead of reactive. Do not invest in telling our community that we are all latent criminals who require constant supervision. Instead, show our community that you care for its welfare by funding social services that will uplift and enrich our lives and livelihood. Invest in our people. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gaskill.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed colleagues and elected officials. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I come to you, my name is John Gaskill, I'm the acting executive director of the Waukegan Public Library. I just wanted to let everyone in the room know, especially to the people of Waukegan, those watching at home, the library is open, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Saturdays and Sunday. The Hinkston Fieldhouse branch is open 10 to 2, Monday through Friday. We have a lot of exciting and wonderful things happening at the Waukegan Public Library. Starting this past month, in July, was Talk Time with Sandra and Jennifer. That's granted by the Lake Forest Hospital, paid for by a grant from the Lake Forest Hospital, and in partnership with the Jocelyn Center, from Wednesdays from 12 to 2, and Fridays from 1 to 3. Anyone from anywhere can come in and get some help if they need someone to talk to, and it's in a group setting, and also individual appointments can be made. The library is grateful to host a group of people that are working on helping people in the community, and it's free and open to everyone. I also wanted to thank everyone for participating in this year's summer library program, Reading Colors Your World. It started on June 6, and it runs through August 7, so that's in a few days. You still have some time to read some books and get some prizes. We're also grateful to have participated in the USDA Summer Lunch Program from 12 to 1. We will still be offering lunches for children ages up 0 to 18, and people with special needs up to the age of 21, from 12 to 1:00 PM in our back parking lot, and it's free to all people. I'm also very excited to suggest that our expansion is ongoing. Every month, we're offering new and exciting services at the library, first of which, I wanted to say that as of August 1, the Waukegan Public Library Children's Department is reopened for browsing, and the ELS, Education Literacy Services Suite, is reopened for tutoring and for classes. Stay tuned for September 1. We have a lot of exciting things. We'll still be conducting curbside pickup, so if it's convenient for you to not have to come in, come and join us at the library, give us a call, text us at the number outside, and we'll bring it to you. We'll also be piloting a delivery service, have been piloting a delivery service since June, so we're going to be working on expanding out and getting it to you if you can't come to us. And last but certainly not least, the branch will be rebranded on September 1 to be more inclusive. The collection, of course, is to be focused on the health and wellness of the people of Waukegan, and we want to encourage everyone, the mission of the Waukegan Public Library is to provide the path to empower and support learning and discovery, and the vision, of course, is in our community. We are a part of this community, and we are grateful for your patronage. Please come visit us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Brother Blanks, please.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. First and foremost, I would like to take this time and congratulate Mrs. Jones on your retirement once again, and also on your many, I'm sure, your many, many resolutions. And I heard you speak earlier on the high, on the high grass and empty lots, and if I can build on that conversation, we also have to consider the many empty buildings. One which comes to mind in particular in my first ward, on the southwest corner of 8th and McAllister Avenue, has been a vacant building sitting there for more than two years. Two whole years that building has been sitting there. Not so much the building is just sitting there, but I'm also considering the building is not secure. We have our children walking back and forth of Carmen Buckner. I have young, I have youth and young ladies around that community. That building should not be sitting there for as long as it have, for as long as it's been there, and at not least at a bare minimum, have some plywood up to the windows. These windows are broken out. Anybody can go in there, and unfortunately, in our community, in that particular spot, we have issues where we deal with drugs, where we dealing with drugs, or just people going in and out of these buildings. It's just not, it's just not, I mean, it's well beyond time for that building, for the owners to either do something with it, secure it, or whatever needs to be done. I watch that building sitting there, and I'm thinking, I see people going in and out of there, and I thought the owners would have done something with it by now, but I'm asking the city, before, this is a preventive move, before something happened in that building with one of the youth, and I don't want to be the one to say if or could or would have said something at the city, so I'm saying something now. Y'all do something about that building. If it's any more in the city like it, make sure they're secure, get something done before somebody get hurt or worse than that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Margaret Carrasco.
Tonight, I will direct my words to Government Code Section 8314, which states that it is unlawful for any elected official to use or permit others to use public resources for personal purposes which are not authorized under law. If you recall, Mr. Beavers, a longtime Chicago Alderman, was sentenced for six months in prison exactly for this, for illegally using funds for personal use. So what you ask, what does that have to do with Waukegan, right? Well, it's picture time. Here we go. Picture number one, today, a neighbor of Alderman, Raudell Kirkwood, Picture number one, today, a neighbor of Alderman, Raudell Kirkwood, dropped these off, in which has a picture of the property before, and it has an unlevel sidewalk to the entrance of the property. Picture number two shows just a more close-up, grass even showing the sidewalks in bad shape. However, now, look at picture number three. We have here extensive entire front sidewalk and leading up to the doorstep of Alderman Raudell Kirkwood's house. According to this neighbor, the work was done by city Waukegan workers. This picture was taken today. You can clearly see the old cement and the new cement of the work that was done. Drumroll, please. Here's the best picture. We have a city of Waukegan barricade right outside the door of Alderman Kirkwood's home, when the entire cement work was allegedly done, according to the neighbors. Therefore, I think this fits in right with what Mayor Taylor stated today, that no one treated special, okay? So I'm here to say, one or two things needs to happen. The city of Waukegan, you put in a new sidewalk up to the doorstep of every single resident in Waukegan, or make Raudell Kirkwood accountable for what's happened here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clyde Macklemore.
Mayor Taylor, you have been in office for a couple of months, and many of the community are not pleased with the direction of your administration. You criticized Mayor Cunningham for many things that you are doing, the same things or worse. You ran on a promise of diversity, treating people with dignity and respect, and eliminating political hire. Let's look at your record thus far. First thing you did, you hired Lisa May to work on the beach. This hire was because she qualified or because she allowed you to use her campaign headquarters. Next, despite all the black and brown law firms in Waukegan, you hired a white-owned law firm from Chicago, this multimillion-dollar contract, which dollars and work could have been done right to a minority firm right here in the city. You hired, you hired, you hired or using your campaign manager as a public relations firm when residents are already paying David Motley to do the work. Isn't that political hiring? You criticized Cunningham for allowing employees to double-dip. However, you hired George Bridges at $142,000, which is more than Mayor Cunningham made. This is a shame that you did this thinking that him being black and his father a judge, that you would give favors in the black community. This is one of the worst directions that you made. The residents have to pay for his pension and salary, and he treat people like garbage. To add to this, now we have a white fire chief, and you promoting ten white firemen this week as a political thank you. Isn't that what you criticize Sam for? During the budget process, you fired more Latinos than anyone, Julius Garcia, the woman out in traffic and others. How is this diversity? Even though you criticize Sam for hiring them, you even keep Sam's chief of staff, Thomas and Marcus. Speaking of Marcus, you can't let him go because Alderman Turner was heard calling him gay and a faggot and said his lifestyle is a disgrace. How is this diversity?
That's a lie, Clyde.
I'm hearing throughout the community, this is my time. I'm hearing throughout the community that you and the city are being sued because a personnel sexual harassment, one of the highest-ranking females in the city was forced to quit her job due to embarrassments that you caused. Rather than work with the black community, you are against them. You gave Sylvia a hard time when she tried to bring the community together with her Juneteenth, and you gave me a hard time on necessary fees as I tried to unite the community with the black expo. Mayor, if you don't care for or can't work with minorities, why did you?
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes. If I can stop this?
Thank you, clerk. Item four, consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion. I'll make the motion.
Alderman Turner, second. Alderman Mozio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
You're going to read it, ma'am?
I'll read them first if you want, okay. Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, July 19, 2021. Item B, motion to approve vendor payments dated August 2, 2021, in the total amount of $1,593,107.65. Item C, motion to approve regular payroll dated July 30, 2021, in the amount of $1,629,911.28. Item D, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD, Holiday, BP, CT manual dated July 30, 2021, in the amount, in the total amount of $14,984.34. Item E, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, final payout dated July 16, 2021, in the amount of $70,439.75. Item F, motion to approve all raffle permits. Again, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Reports and communications. Report from Dr. Schwab?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item six, old business, being none. Item seven, new business. Can I have a motion to item A? Alderman Florian, second.
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Hayes.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion to approve an ordinance amending Article III of Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Waukegan, Illinois regarding residential disabled parking spaces, parking meters, and city-owned parking lots. Any questions to the motion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So this motion and others that are here on the agenda were heard in committee this evening, and I thought we were doing committee and then, you know, working them through committee and then bringing them up at the following meeting, the next meeting.
Sure, we, these are ones that, because they're time-sensitive, that's why we were doing it this way, because they are actually starting to install the parking meters, starting August 4.
Great.
So that wouldn't make it to the next meeting, okay?
All right, great. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Any other questions to the motion? Alderman Kirkwood.
In terms of the parking meter, the fees for those meters, have it changed any, according to the ordinance?
I believe they're the same. Is, well, the chief is here. Can you answer that one?
What was the question? Okay, and for the electronic, you know, when they pull out, it goes back to zero? Okay?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and so individuals can also put money back on the meters remotely?
Correct.
So they don't have to come back out to the meters?
That's correct.
Wow. And have we made a decision in terms of the businesspeople downtown? Do they get so many, for their workers? How is, you know, because some of the businesspeople in the downtown section felt that they didn't have any input.
I appreciate the question. The question is legislative in nature, and that'll be, once the legislative decides how they want to go with that or how you all want to go with that, then we'll pick it up on the enforcement side of the House.
Okay, thank you.
So these are going in hopefully by August 4, but enforcement will not start until, I believe, the 16th. Was, we took the roll call, motion passed and carried? Was that correct?
Yeah.
We didn't do the roll call? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Oops. Alderman Rivera, sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
And just, sorry I didn't catch this. Well, I did not catch it. Alderman Kirkwood, the provision for special downtown live-work rate permits is in there. It's on page 18 of the revised, the amended ordinance, and it does provide that property owners, business owners can apply in bulk for permits for their tenants or their employees.
Okay, my only concern is that we don't keep changing it. Some people got ten, some people got fifteen, some people got twenty last time around. It should be consistent for all the businesses.
There's a number in there, correct?
There is, yes. There is a, there is a rate. The first four permits are free. You have to provide documentation of either a lease, ownership, or tenancy, and then there is a fixed rate for additional ones on a monthly basis. Yeah, absolutely. So there is, each downtown business has the ability to obtain permits, a special live-work rate. So people live downtown or work downtown, they can get these for a tenant. The first four permits are free, and then thereafter, they are $40 per permit. So that's a fixed rate that everybody would have to pay. They don't get, they only get the first four free. You have to prove, you have to prove that you actually have a ownership or a license, or a lease. That would work, that would work through the traffic enforcement department of the police.
Item B, this one failed?
We finished the vote.
You got a vote in?
I'm sorry, did we do the vote?
We didn't vote yet.
We started roll call, or we were?
You did 7A.
Call for a question.
Yeah, and the roll call finished.
We did 7A. Item B, that motion failed in committee.
Correct.
So we'll be sending, I believe that goes back to committee now?
No, we still voted here, correct?
No, it didn't come out of committee.
Committee is still binding, am I right, counselor?
So it came out of committee with a negative recommendation. So you can, you can motion to approve. If there's no motion to approve, it will just die. So you can take, you can take, you can take, if there's someone who wants to motion and second it, for lack of a motion second, it would just fall off.
You want to make the motion?
You can ask for a motion.
Would you like to make, anyone here like to make a motion for it? Okay. Guys in committee.
DOA.
Item C, I'm going to have corporate counsel talk about this before we actually do the motion.
Okay, so, and I apologize that I did not bring this up in committee, but this is a power purchase agreement for the water supply, for the water plant and a number of the pumping stations. This is a four-month agreement, basically, that will get us through as we go through a broker and try and solicit the best prices from the market. The prices that were included in your packet were from July 26, I believe. The power market fluctuates intensely day to day, and so we have some new prices. On the back, in page eight of eight of the agreement, there was an energy price, dollars per kilowatt hour, of five cents, 5.693 cents. Today's price, fresh off the market, is 5.830. That is below the comm ed rate, which we'd be stuck with if we did not sign this contract. And we will be going out, working with brokers, including possibly some consortiums, to get the best possible power rate that we can. The reason that we're buying power for the water plant, as opposed to getting it through our franchise agreement, is because the water plant generates revenue, so it's not, it's not included in our franchise agreement. We do have to buy power for these facilities. So just wanted to make you aware that the contract that will be approved tonight is for the energy price of 5.830 cents per kilowatt hour. It's a very technical thing, but I had to say it to make sure that I didn't sign the wrong contract.
So does everybody understand that this is just a four-month agreement? Okay. Can I have a motion for item C? Alderman Rivera, second. Alderman Seager. A motion to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Constellation New Energy Incorporated for the supply of electricity for city-owned water distribution locations. And again, the rate is 5.830 cents. Any questions to the motion?
What was the previous rate?
Well, what they quoted us last week was 5.93, so.
Well, what were we paying on the last contract, I guess, is what I meant. Do we know that?
I'd have to look back. It was from 2016, so.
So it would have been less, probably.
You know what, I, literally, you know, the power markets fluctuate so widely. I can, I can look that up, but I can't give it to you right now.
That's okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes. Should this be under joint commission?
Should this be what?
Under joint commission.
Under joint commission?
What? What do you mean by joint commission?
Huh?
What do you mean by joint commission, she's asking?
Disregard the question.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, clerk. Item D, can I have a first to the motion? Alderman Florian, second. Alderman Mozio. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim 201002W009 for a total amount not to exceed $21,793.25. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on August 2, 2021. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item E, can I have a first to the motion? Alderman Florian, second.
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Hayes. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle public works department workman's compensation claim 200701W019 for a total amount not to exceed $62,751.75. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on August 2, 2021. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you. Item F, can I have a first to the motion? Alderman Newsom.
I'll second.
Alderman Bolton, second. A motion to approve ordinance 21-0, amending the salary ordinance and establishing the salary and benefits for employees and the elected officials of the city effective May 1, 2021. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on August 2, 2021. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, clerk. Item G, can I have a? Item G, can I have a first to the motion?
I'll first.
Okay, Alderman Rivera, a second, Alderman Seager. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-one R, a resolution amending the authorizing of police and fire exempt command staff to work outside security details at the seven G gate. Please note that the current document is appendix D of the salary ordinance, and this matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee on August second, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Item H, can I have a motion? Alderman Hayes, second. Alderman Mozio. Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Waukegan, the City of Zion, and the County of Lake for the two thousand twenty-one Burn Justice Assistance Grant, known as the JAG Program Award. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on August second, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, closing items, Alderman time.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A couple items, in terms of block parties with the advent of COVID increasing in the state of Illinois, we need to be careful about having super spreaders. So, I would caution individuals in the fourth ward that if you're going to have a block party, let's be real careful about that and the handling of food. Also, I would encourage that we organize neighborhood watch programs in your different blocks. Also, we will be giving you information about Operation Clean Sweep, where we'll be putting some dumpsters before the next council meeting. Also, if you have brush, and I see there's a lot of brush out on the parkways in the fourth ward, you need to call Public Works at eight four seven, three six oh. Where's my card at? Let me give you that number again for Public Works. Eight four seven, three six oh, oh nine four four. Please, don't leave it on the parkway without calling Public Works. That's all I have, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to announce the fifth ward, Operation Clean Sweep, is going to take place Saturday, August the fourteenth, from eight AM to ten AM. It's going to be at the corner of Greenwood and Delaware. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. My number is eight four seven, four nine four, four one nine zero, or by email, edith.nusom@waukeganil.gov. And then also, I would like to thank the mayor, chief of staff, chief of police, chief of fire, department heads, all those that were in attendance last Wednesday at my ward meeting here at City Hall. I got some positive feedback, wealth of information that the department heads offered to my constituents, and I just want to thank you for attending, and I think it was a success. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excuse me, so, in the sixth ward, last weekend, or last Friday, we had our partners, Youth Conservation Corps assisted the public works department in doing three major cleanups in, in, in three alleys in the sixth ward. They were going to do a fourth, but they ran out of time. But I just want to recognize the young men and women from Youth Conservation Corps for your volunteer effort to help keep Waukegan clean. I know they're working in other wards as well, and I just can't say enough about them, work ethic, their commitment, and the job that they're doing. Also, in the sixth ward upcoming, this month, August twenty-second is a Sunday from two to five PM is our twelfth annual ice cream social. It'll be at thirteen twenty North Jackson Street in my front yard, and all are welcome. So, come and get some free ice cream. And then, September seventeenth, we'll do another dumpster drop that's going to be in the seventeen hundred block of Hickory that's underneath the COMED power lines. So, I'll be putting this stuff out on social media and blast emails and such, but please make a note if you're watching at home, dumpster drop on September seventeenth, and that'll be from eight thirty to three PM. And again, twelfth annual ice cream social, August twenty-second from two to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to thank everyone who participated in audience time. I sincerely appreciate all the input. I also wanted to just indicate that I'm planning a ward meeting on Thursday, September the ninth. The time is still, is still being worked out, but I will have communication out so everyone can, please attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanted to let everyone know that I am going to be out in the ward. I'm going to try to get to every door in my ward, if I can do it, before the next election starts. But I'm going to be out encouraging voting. I, I wrote a letter here that I'm going to put on everybody's door. I don't know that I'll be able to knock on every door, because I just don't think I have enough time between now and the next election for us. But I'm encouraging people to vote. It is the right benefit and obligation to vote as a citizen. Voting allows you to choose the people you want to represent you and your community in the governance of your town, county, state, and country. Our last election had less than a ten percent turnout, and I'm working to change this for the next election. We need everyone to have a voice. If we don't take part in the process of choosing our representatives, we forfeit the right to complain about the representatives that others have chosen. From taxes to road building, everything is decided by the policymakers that are voted in, and you should have a voice in saying who that is. Voter registration allows qualified voters to participate in the election process and exercise one of their most basic rights. So, my letter also includes, you know, you must be a U.S. citizen, eighteen years of age, all that stuff, how to register, where to register, you can do it online, by mail. So, I will be out. Hopefully, some of my other Aldermen will join me in this effort, and maybe we can change that ten percent turnout. I mean, that's just pitiful, in my opinion. But anyway, I'm going to do what I can to try to change that. The second thing I want to say, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards left, but Mr. Mathis is still here, I wanted to apologize to both men. Last city council meeting, they brought up the youth violence in our community, and, and I failed to address that when I spoke that night, and I apologize for that. I have encouraged the mayor, I've, I've talked to the city attorney, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to the chief of staff. I think that if we get an intergovernmental committee together, made up of the city, the township, the library, the park district, the school board, the port authority, all of the, the main players in the game, and we get a commu, a committee together that meets maybe four times a year, we don't have to meet every month. But if we get the people in the room that can change things for this community and address some of these issues, I think maybe we have a chance of, of making a change. We all need to know what we're up to, what each other is doing. You know, I can't tell you how many times someone comes to me about something with the school board, and I have to explain that I'm not on the school board, I'm on the city council, and they're completely different things. But we are all working towards the same goals, or should be anyway, and we should at least be talking to each other. Earlier this year, I, the airport is in my ward, it's not really in my ward, but my ward goes around it. The port authority was voting on whether to impose a twenty-five dollar tax on every home in Waukegan, and I didn't even know about it until Monday, and they were voting on Wednesday. People would have been up in arms about that, right? Like, it would have looked like, you know, the, the poor people of Waukegan were subsidizing the people with planes and boats. I mean, and, and we as a city council weren't even told about that. So, those are the kinds of things, I think, that we need to be in the room and discussing so those surprises don't happen. Thankfully, they didn't vote to do it, but they have the authority to do that. Did you know that?
No, I did not know, and that was my question, because my understanding was that they missed that opportunity decades ago.
No, they still have the authority.
To be a taxing body, and therefore, they get, their revenues is solely from services and products.
Not true. They, they have traditionally, but they have the, the ability to impose a tax on the citizens, and they're an appointed board. They're not elected. That, that's a problem for me.
That's a problem for me.
But, anyway, I digress. But anyhow, that, that's one of the things I think that as a city council, we could, we could start. It would, it would be a start, possibly, to make something like that happen, so.
I have a question. You said they have a right to impose the taxes for the Waukegan, but the airport doesn't do much for the Waukegan already, just the name is airport.
Well, we do get tax from the gasoline that's sold there.
This is now the mayor.
You know what, we, we, we don't have this as an open discussion, and I'm really sorry because it could go on forever.
Yeah.
This is just Alderman time, and I, I'm sorry, but you can ask her after the fact, or ask any of us. Sorry, Mayor.
That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Jones, first of all, I have not had an opportunity to meet with you or work with you, but thank you very much for your service and your lovely presentation. We're indebted for all of your service and everything you've done over the past several decades for the city of Waukegan, so thank you very much. Piggybacking on what Alderman Rivera said, during audience time, I, I was impressed with some of the presentations. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for being armed with facts and, and details, and pointing us in direction to look at articles or giving us names of people that we can speak with about, in particular, ShotSpotter is, is one, but the issues in, you know, the vacant buildings and things of that nature continue to bring these things to our attention and continue to bring these topics to city council, because it keeps us talking about all of the issues. I know tonight was focused heavily on ShotSpotter, but continued to present, and, and I, I thought the way you did, you did so was, was very effective, so thank you. There, as a reminder to the mayor's comments earlier, there is a forum on police use of force, I believe it's this Saturday, August seventh, at ten thirty here at City Hall, so I'm looking forward to that. Please come out. I, I think it's going to be a, a good discussion and, and informative dialogue. There's going to be another dumpster drop in the ninth ward, but I will have more information about that. It's going to be this month, but I'll have more information about it at the next meeting, and we'll be putting it on on social media as well. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Pat Jones, a distinguished woman. You have definitely made a great impact on our city, especially our elderly, and my mother appreciates you, and I just thank you for all that you've done. I hate to see you go, but I will definitely be in touch. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'd like to announce the upcoming block party that's going to be in the first ward between George Sunderland and McAllister in that intersection, and it will be from twelve o'clock to four. And come out and let's come together. And then I'd like to thank the Bahai community in the first ward on Bluff. Distinguished woman, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, if you could just wave. She took, took on the job to put on a meeting for the area of Bluff, and I really thank you for that, and she did a neighborhood cleanup on July twenty-fourth, and she's a real leader. Thank you so much for your help. And then I wanted to address Brother Blanks, thank you for bringing to the attention of the House on Eighth and McAllister, it's definitely scheduled, and that issue is being addressed, as well as all the other illegal activity there that's going on. So, the mayor knows about this, it's scheduled, and we're just constantly addressing it. And I know it's slow, but we're definitely being addressing it. And I just can reiterate what he had mentioned, don't forget about the form of the police use of force. He forgot to announce the time, it's ten thirty here on Saturday. Make sure you come and support that. And then I was out in the community today at Beacon Place, and they had two hundred and fifty children participate in the Walkathon today. And it was an excellent event, and I've also talked to the staff there about making sure they include children of color. And Brother Blanks, I know you've also been addressing the director there as well. So, we want definitely diversity there.
Addressing who?
I know you had talked to the director of Beacon Place.
Oh, I just spoke to Beacon.
Yeah, yes, you did. So, thank you for that. And then, if you have any community events, please invite me, please give me a few weeks in advance so that I can support you. Feel free to call me at two two four, six zero seven, eight four four five. Two two four, six, zero, seven, eight four four five. Thank you. Oh, and I, I want to thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging Juneteenth as our federal holiday. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
At this time, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Jones for an outstanding job well done, so many years, hard work, great service. Congratulations to you, all your ex, all your people in your department. Job well done. Thank you.
Alderman Mozio.
Yes, I, I too, obviously, have to congratulate Patricia Jones. You need to start a class on how to be an elected official, and how to serve the public, because you're one of the finest that I know. There's so many people that you helped. Your office was always sort of my go-to, and I didn't know where else to turn to. I said, well, hell, I know Patricia probably knows how to handle this, so. Something tells me you may be retired, and it's not your problem anymore, but I know that Rolodex is deep. So, you, you may get a few phone calls. I know you better than that. I know if, I know you would never turn down a request from help from somebody in the community. You, you, you may tell me it's not your problem, and you direct me to somebody else, but that, like I said, that Rolodex is deep, and I appreciate that, and thank you for everything. To Brother Blanks, you are right on about that vacant building, or any vacant building. I think anybody that's heard me up here long enough, I can't stand a vacant building, because it's just trouble waiting to happen. We need to be stricter and sterner with these people that own these buildings that do not, I can, I get it, they may be vacant for a couple of months, but two years? Yeah, and that, that Waukegan building down there, I mean, I'm not going to get started, but I think anybody that's heard me up here is we need to be sterner, develop some ordinances to go after these property owners who just let these buildings just sit and sit. And even if you secure it, it doesn't take the criminal element too long to figure out that ain't nobody watching this place. And it, it's just a crime scene waiting to happen, and we, we just, we got to do better. And I appreciate you putting that back on the radar, Brother Blanks, thank you. Alderman Florian sort of struck a chord with me about having an intergovernmental thing. That needs to happen, because so many of the social things and social change that people want to happen, I'm going to be honest with you, the city is not equipped with them. You have a health department, a lake, you have the County of Lake that has a health department that is far more equipped to deal with some of these issues than us. You have a school district that has seventeen thousand clients come to them every day. And I'm there, and the school district needs to do a better job of dealing with some of these social issues that kids have. You have the clientele coming to your building. So, and my, and I'm there, I've been there thirty years. We had one system, at least in the high school, that worked. It was called smaller learning communities. Ask any teacher that had been there, less behavior problems, less suspensions, less fights, better relationship with kids. They blew it up. They said they couldn't afford it. But where's the outrage with the school board? Where's the outrage with the administration? I'm with you guys on trying to make social change, but we can't do it all up here. The Waukegan Police Department can't do it all. We have other resources in this community that have the ability to at least come together and help. But unless you put heat on them, like you put on us, which is fine, that's our job, you're supposed to get the heat up here, that's why you run for office, but where's the rest of the heat? Where's the heat across the street? Where's the heat 1201 Sharon Road? I don't mind getting it asked, but I don't want to be the only one getting it, when I don't have the ability to change it. So if we really want to come together, then we got to start putting heat on everybody, not just this here. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's something I forgot. On July the 24th, we had a shred day. I want to thank the Sheriff Department, the City of Waukegan, State Senator Johnson, and State Rep Rita Mayfield. We had three-quarters of a truck that was filled that day. We're going to do another shred day in October. We'll give you that date, but we're also going to include electronic devices, as well as getting rid of prescription medicine, working with Walgreens to help get rid of those situations. So we'll give you more information. I did talk with the senator and the state rep that they're willing to help sponsor that again in October. So we will give you the date, get the word out.
Mayor Taylor, that concludes the Alderman's time.
I just have one really quick announcement. We do have a ninth code enforcer starting on August 9th that will be working from Sunday through Thursday. So now we will have a code enforcer on Saturday and one on Sunday, but we will now have a full set of nine code enforcers, and that'll be starting August 9th, so that'll be a great help. Part of the problem is we only had seven, was it? At some points during our history, we've only had four. So we are now up to a full nine, and we will have weekend coverage. Now, give us a little bit of time as they get trained. Our Saturday one is out, and like I said, our Sunday one will start, and probably completely on their own, starting in September. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry, motion to approve or dismiss? Mozio, a second. A second motion to adjourn? Okay. Alderman Rivera.
We need a, hello, we need a vote.
Wait, we need a vote, guys.
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Hayes, we need a vote.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Hayes, could you come back?
Alderman Hayes, we need...
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Hayes.
Thomas.
We need you back. Roll call, please.
Don't go yet, Patricia's going to speak.
Don't go.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone.